Welcome, everyone, to tonight's city council meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Madam Clerk, your call is adjourned. Mayor Doring is absent. Vice Mayor Deasy?
Here.
Councilmember Barrick?
Here.
Spatarotto?
Here.
And Summers is absent.
All right. Can we all please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, thank you. So we'll move on to adoption of the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any updates to the agenda?
There is. Item 8.1, which is our proclamation for this evening, has been postponed to the October 28th meeting.
Great, thank you. If there are no other modifications, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Did I say that? All in favor? Is that how I say that? All in favor of adopting the agenda? Hi.
Yes.
Okay, and then we can move right into approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to take a look and consider proposing approval of the regular minutes of the September 23rd, 2025 council meeting?
I'll make the motion.
All right, all in favor of adopting the minutes from September 23rd, 2025?
Yes.
Wonderful, and the motion is approved. All right, let's move into public forum. Members of the public are entitled, thank you all for joining us, are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda during public forum. Each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendized item only once at a meeting. Brief questions by council members for clarification may be posed and answered, and council members may make requests that items be placed on future agendas, but in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda. Do we have any public comments?
Welcome. Whoa, this is really low. One second. Good evening, City Council. I am speaking as a resident. My name is Michelle Lou Covell, and I live on Park Street. I had a conversation recently that sent the hairs on the back of my neck straight up. I was speaking to a longtime resident, someone deeply connected with this town, who works for the county and has served on many committees for several decades, that congratulated me on my appointment to the Planning Commission. When I mentioned that I had filed several formal complaints with the city manager, Anil Camello, about what I believe are unethical items, this person said, "If you file complaints on staff, you've made yourself Anil's biggest enemy. You've just put a big X on your back." Hearing that was chilling. If asking for accountability means putting a target on your back, then we have a serious problem. In our council-manager government, checks and balances exist to prevent abuse of power. Each part, staff, council, and residents, has a role in ensuring accountability. I appreciate the council service and look forward to the water presentation tonight. I understand that this is not on the agenda today and will be discussed in tomorrow's close session. Here's my main point. No one in this town should ever feel like they have an X on their back for standing up for what they believe in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else like to speak? We did receive public comment by writing, and we have read them all, and thank you for those as well. With nothing else, we will move on to Agenda Item 7, Reports by Staff and City Council. Oh, sorry. Welcome.
John Sales, 1451 Oak Avenue. I've been resident of this town for a number of years, and I'm appalled by these letters that have been written that are just duplicates of somebody's idea of what things are. The job as city manager is really difficult, and if you have any interest in the history of St. Helena, you can look back and see what we've had as city managers in the past. And there's been a few good ones, and there's some that have been totally appalling. It's up to the city council to determine the city manager and his qualifications and what he does. I've met Anil in different occasions. I've found him to be straightforward. I think he's in a very difficult job here. We have people in this community that are naysayers to virtually anything that can come up on either side of the issue. And we need to think about that when we're thinking about people and personnel. Anil has a job that I would not want, and I've managed a lot of people in my lifetime, but this has got to be the most difficult area that I've ever seen. We don't seem to be able to come to agreement on anything here. Even good projects get blown out of the water for one reason or another. And it's time we knock off all this nonsense and come together and support the people we help.
Thank you very much.
My name's Steve Goldfarb. I live here in St. Helena, but I'm a relative newcomer. I've only been here since 97.
Welcome.
I had no, thank you. I really didn't intend to speak tonight, but I would echo what John just said about being appalled by the public comments which have already been submitted to you. I have worked in city government my entire life, and having people on one side of an issue or the other side is not unusual. And in fact, it should always be encouraged. But I want you to remember one thing. When a group comes to you because they have a specific concern, and it is in their personal interest to get it done rather than what's best for this city, please take that into account. I have worked with the city staff for years, and I've worked with Anil for quite some time, and sometimes I don't like what the city is telling me because it puts restrictions on me in some way. And sometimes I like what the city eventually does, but I have never found anybody in this city process that was not worthy of the job that they have. Anil has done an excellent job. Whether you agree with him on each issue, running this city is like running a hellhole, and I would just ask you to please take that into account with whatever you have to do because it is your responsibility to make this city run, not just today, but into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Cindy Warren, 1317 Allen. First of all, Anil, I would like to apologize. This is not who we are. Absolutely, I read through those letters today, and as John said, it's a form letter. It just, let's just send it to all the haters, the Nextdoor haters, and this is all the same people on Nextdoor. Nothing is ever good or right. And I read something yesterday that was blaming Anil because the bathroom was dirty. One of the, you know, the city bathrooms was dirty. I'm like, wait a second, he's not the guy cleaning the bathrooms. Talk to someone, but don't put a picture of a bathroom up and blame it on this man. He is working his rear end off. I served on several committees with him. He is polite. He returns phone calls. He's smart. He takes criticism. He offers great ideas, and I think he has the best things at heart. And he loves this, and to have a, this is a witch hunt, and St. Helena has done this over and over and over again. And I, we should all be embarrassed by this behavior. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Mulner, and I live on St. James here in St. Helena. I certainly echo earlier comments. I have known Anil for two or three, four years through one of the service clubs here in town, and I know him as a very honest person, a genuine person, and one that really likes to get the job done. He's working under extreme circumstances with his job. I mean, who would ever want to run this city the way it is? It's financially almost in bankruptcy, and who would ever want to take that on? I think he's a very trusted person, a wonderful individual, and he should continue on with his programs that he has. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we will move, thank you all for your comments and for showing up. It is great to have people here and have people commenting. Always welcome. Please come back and come often. Let's move into Item 7, Reports by Staff and City Council. Let's see, should I read this all? I will go ahead and, well, let's see. Reports by staff or city council members that are on items of general interest, so we can all comment. Brief questions for clarification may be posed and answered, and council members may request that items be placed on a future item. Except under certain circumstances, the Brown Act prohibits any other discussion or action by the city council. So, Mr. Manager Camello, any reports by staff?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Deasy. Yes, we have two announcements. One is by the Acting Director of Community Services, Ashley, will be coming up here and speaking, and then the other will be by Assistant City Manager Leach.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Sylvester.
Good evening, City Council. I just have a quick announcement for you guys tonight. It is about the 39th Annual Harvest Festival taking place this Saturday. So this festival will be 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. It'll be out on Library Lane in Adams Street, so a different location this year. The logistics planning have been going great for this location so far, and this weather will not continue on Saturday, we're told, so that's even better. We have over 75 vendors, including artisan and nonprofit vendors that'll be out there, live music, entertainment performances, food and beverage, Kid Zone, Interactive Elements, Car Display, Pumpkin Patch, and of course, the Pet Paw Raid. That will begin at 10:00 a.m. on Library Lane, so signups are still live, and we can sign you up if you're interested. Call the Recreation Office. The St. Helena Public Library will be open on Saturday with modified hours from 10:00 to 3:00, so if you want to go into the library during the festival, you are more than welcome to. But our full lineup is online and on social media for our full day of events, including timing and entertainment that will be happening throughout the day. We'll have various department and city hall booths available to answer any question. And then exciting, we'll have our sesquicentennial booth out there with some 150th year celebration, March the calendar for the events we have planned during the year. So if you stop by and see them, they'll tell you all about the exciting year ahead in 2026 as well, but we hope to see everybody out there.
Thank you. Thank you, as always. Great job by Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. Just a few highlights to bring to your attention. Coming up on October 23rd at 1:00, there will be a tree hearing related to the removal of the big oak tree near the Signorelli barn. That is a virtual meeting, so there's a Zoom link on the website. We'll put out some social media related to it as well. The website also has an independent arborist report on the tree and its health and its disposition. So we welcome as many people that is able to make that meeting at 1:00 on October 23rd. Additionally, kind of a highlight project that, part of our most recent capital improvement project, is we're eliminating the drainage issue at the intersection of Spring Mountain Road and Spring Mountain Court. That has been a historic ponding experience for those in that area for a number of years, and that has been resolved through the installation of a drain inlet and some piping. And then finally, what started this week, hopefully some in the Pope and Star and Hunt areas are experiencing better colored water with a better, less odor and discoloration and taste. We started flushing in that area yesterday. We'll continue to move west and north, and then over the next several weeks, flushing the balance of the town. And with that, I will field any questions you might have.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions?
Just more of a ask, if you could, for the tree, include that in the newsletter with the link with the arborist, the independent arborist report, I think that would go along the way. I know a lot of folks are interested in that in the community.
I think our city clerk can make that happen.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll jump on that, too. If there are plans for how it'll be replanted, that might also be interesting if it's not there already.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you for that report and for all the good Public Works work around the city. Any other?
Yes, we, some of us have a report out pursuant to AB 1234. 1234, I was at Cal Cities Thursday and Friday for the city.
I was there as well. I was there Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Went to several meetings, all very educational, informational. Happy to give more report on the ones that I went to if anyone would be of interest, specifically for myself. I went to some meetings regarding creating more people and encouraging more people to get into city leadership opportunities, as well as more information on legalities of creating more affordable housing within our town. So happy to providing any information if anyone would like that.
Wonderful, thank you. Any you want to share?
No.
No. Thank you for attending. Any other reports? Mr. Camello?
Thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. Just wanted to point out that Councilmember Summers will also make a report. Unfortunately, he's running late, so perhaps as long as the city attorney is okay with it, he can report at the end of the meeting.
That's fine, or we, I mean, we can just acknowledge, really, he just has to report that he also attended Cal Cities. When you have a, when you go to a city-funded event, you have to report out the next regular meeting, so we can just acknowledge that Mr. Summers attended as well, and I think we're good.
Wonderful, thank you. Yes, ready? Okay, let's move on to, welcome, Mr. Summers. Mr. Summers, we were just finishing up on the Cal Cities conference. We know you attended. Thank you. If there's anything you would like to share, please feel free, otherwise we can move on.
Indubitably. I attended the conference. I've attended conferences over the last three years, and it's always good to check in with other cities because we're in a state of affairs, and I like to see where we're at in comparison to other cities in California and how state rules and laws are affecting cities and how it's affecting us and how they're handling it. So you can get a lot of good information and knowledge, and I love going there to identify those things and get a broader scope of experience. Yet, the best part of it was connecting with my other councilpeople and identifying our issues and how we can translate those bigger issues that other cities are facing and sort of liquidate their solutions and reflect that into our own pathway forward. So that's what I have to reflect from Cal Cities, and thank you. Councilperson, councilperson, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you for representing us. And with that, we will move to Item Number 8.2, a presentation by the Water and Wastewater Advisory Committee or Committee members regarding collaborative efforts to address our water quality issues. Welcome, Mr. Kuba.
My name's Jay Koba. I am, sorry, nobody pronounces it right. And I am, I am part of the Water Quality Subcommittee along with Peter White as a Subcommittee of the Water and Wastewater Advisory Committee. What I'm going to present today is the result of engagement in discussions about water quality with Public Works, within the Water and Wastewater Advisory Committee, and with our consultant, Issam Najin. And what I hope to do today with this presentation is create a common understanding of the challenges and the path forward in terms of our water quality. So the next slide. What's important to note here is that we don't have anything unusual. We have a typical potable water system, and it has three components to it. It has the source water, it has a water treatment facility, and then it has a distribution system, which generally has pumps and water tanks, and then a lot of plumbing that goes through the city. On the next slide is where our water comes from. Our water comes from three different sources. Bell Canyon, which is a reservoir to the north of here, Stonebridge Wells, which use, which produce groundwater, and Napa. The two sources that we have that are Bell Canyon Reservoir and Stonebridge Wells are raw water. They are not treated, so therefore, we do treat them. The water that we get from Napa is treated by Napa, and so we get potable water directly from Napa, and it goes into our distribution system at the pumping station. So on the next slide. Our water quality problems and all water quality problems stem from inadequate raw water treatment. So solids and color in distributed water result primarily from inadequate removal of naturally occurring iron and manganese in the raw water during treatment. Taste and odor in distributed water results primarily from inadequate removal of naturally occurring biological materials from the raw water during water treatment. Our distribution pipelines, of which we have miles and miles of pipelines, have years of accumulated solids which are re-suspended every time the water velocity in the pipeline changes. And it get, and it is suspended more when it's changed abruptly. So that is the source of the challenges with our water. And the next slide shows what the plan is to do this. The first step is to stop metals and biological materials from getting into the distribution system. And that really means working on the water treatment plant and the performance of the water treatment plant. So we have a four-step process that we're in the middle of right now, and the first step is to implement and maintain a water analysis program to identify problems and monitor treatment of performance that's, that's, that we're experiencing today. And that program was started earlier this year with much more extensive analysis of water than has been previously done in the past. This is not analysis that's done for the state, under state requirements for, for water quality and, and hygienics. This is, this is to simply understand what our water treatment challenges are. And I will show you some data on the next slide that is reflective of our water system. Not yet, please. The second point is that we're going to modify our water treatment procedures with the advice of our consultant to enhance performance during the current, using the current equipment configuration. So we have an equipment configuration that is 65 years old and basically has not been updated in 65 years, and it has limitations. But it has those limitations, and you can operate it well, or you can operate it not so well. And our consultant is helping us operate our equipment that is in place in a better way, and that's in progress right now. There are modifications that, in our procedures, that will continue as the consultant continues to get the analysis of the samples and make suggestions as to how to operate our equipment. The third element here is really one of updating our controls of the equipment. Many of the controls that we have in our system, because they are 65 years old, are manual, and they have left the information revolution not, completely not existent in our equipment. So what we, what we have is a pretty rudimentary computer control system for our water equipment, and we need to implement and enhance continuous process control for our system. And this requires that we get real-time feedback control of treatment. So you test what you're looking for and downstream of where the control is, and then when you, when it deviates from where it should be, you change the process control so that it stays where it's supposed to be. The second thing is, is that, is that can give us rapid identification and response to interruptions. Today, if we have an interruption, it may not be noticed for eight hours or 10 hours, and what you want is alarm systems and a continuous monitoring of the process so that you know when things are happening, when they're happening, and that you can, and you can do some remediation. The third is that it could minimize the abrupt velocity changes in our water, and that's, we do monitor, we do change where our sourcing of water is, and if we do that too abruptly, it does make the sediments go back into the water, and we end up with, with colored water. So in the case of computer control, you can do that over a longer period of time, and you can do that continuously so you don't disrupt the velocity in the pipelines. The fourth step that we need to do is potentially modify some water treatment equipment and procedures to further enhance treatment. Our consultant has suggested that we have duplicate critical equipment for reliability, but there are other things that we may have to do. As an example, we may have to put a filter in at the wells to remove more solids. Those things are still being investigated today, and exactly what that list is is not yet clear. So I'm going to show you some slides on, on our water quality, and they're just representative. They're not comprehensive. They're not comprehensive. There's more, there's more data if, if people want it. But this gives you a perspective on the challenges that we face. So on the next slide, this is raw water at Bell Canyon, and the blue line is the amount of manganese in the raw water. And what's important to note there is not only is it pretty high, and 1,500 parts per billion is a huge amount of manganese in the water, but it's also highly variable, which means that your system has to be able to tolerate high variance in the inputs and still get it down to lower values. The red line there is what happens after treated water. So we are removing 95-plus percent of the manganese in the water through water treatment. And I'm, what I'm going to tell you is 27 parts per billion is not quite low enough. So while we are taking a tremendous amount out, we still have some challenges at periods of time that our levels are a little too high. So on the next slide, this is now manganese and iron for treated Bell Canyon water, and the goals really have to do with at what point, you can't get it all out, but at what point does it become a non-issue in terms of color of the water? And for iron, that's about 50 parts per billion. And you can see since the program was put into place with, since the monitoring was put in place in May, that we've come down from 50 parts per billion, and we're operating at a pretty low level of iron in the, in the Bell Canyon water. And this just shows that the, that the advice that the consultant is giving us about operating our equipment is working for us. It's also working for us on manganese, but manganese is more difficult from a color point of view and solids point of view, and we are close to the targets, but not quite at the targets of 20 parts per billion. So on the next slide, so once we've stabilized, oh, is there a question?
Thank you for this. Excellent presentation, by the way. Looking at the manganese chart, really useful, have, has the committee or the city matched up the periods where we've been above with reports on grapevine? But we would expect discolored water, correct? Do those match up? Are they in sync with this data?
I, I've looked for those, and I don't generally see it. When we had the event, I want to say in August, where we had a couple of mechanical shutdowns in the system simultaneously, and we had to switch water supplies very abruptly because we were low on water in Tank Two, and, and we, we needed it for supply, and the result of that was 50 complaints on, on grapevine of, of water. And that had to do with an abrupt velocity change, and that's what we want to try to avoid doing in the future. These I haven't seen yet. I'm going to show you some slides on the next page where it's complicated by the sediments that are in the pipelines. So you have the pipelines, you're adding, you're constantly adding more manganese and iron to the system, but hopefully at really low levels so that when you stir up some of the sediments, that actually it doesn't go too high. So I, I think, I think, we'll, we'll get to this in a second, but flushing is an important thing to do and to continue to do, but we have to bring these, these levels coming out of wa, of water treatment, we've got to get them down below these threshold levels and do it on a absolutely consistent basis. So, so once, once we have it controlled at the water treatment plant, that we're not releasing too much of iron or manganese into the distribution pipeline systems, then we can, and I should say, at the same time, we need to address the distribution system because there are, again, decades of sediment in, in our pipeline systems. And the first thing that we can do is reduce accumulated solids in distribution pipelines through flushing. And Joe has talked about that, and it is really about you're increasing the velocity in a certain section of pipeline so that you stir up the sediments and they come out through the hydrants. That's what flushing does. The second thing that we can do is, and although this is a small extent, we are seeing some corrosion of iron pipes, and that has to do with the pH of our water. It needs to be a little bit more basic, and if it does that, it will actually stabilize the pipelines and they won't corrode as much if it's a little bit more basic. That's, again, is something that we do upstream in the water treatment plant, but we do need to increase the pH of our water. And finally, and the most desperate solution here is to actually replace the iron pipelines. And I, I don't advise that, but we are going to be doing it over time, and as we do it, we want to replace the iron pipelines with non-corrosive pipelines. So on the last slide, yeah, on the last slide, I just want to show the effect of the distribution system. This is the same time period. This is manganese at Bell Canyon Outlet, and then manganese at 1240 Oak Street, the water main there. And you can see actually that the manganese levels on the right are actually higher than what's coming out of Bell Canyon. And this implies, actually, that we are stirring up some of the sediments as we deliver water through our system, and that what we see at homes is a combination of what's coming through the water treatment plant and what is being stirred up in the pipelines. So we will need to keep doing flushing to try to remove the finer sediments out of the, out of the pipelines. You will never get all of the sediment out of the pipelines, but it's important first that we work very hard at making sure the metals don't, are, at high levels are not coming out of our treatment process. That's my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Jay, thank you. And the data's great, really helpful. Question on these slides, and great illustration from source to actual, you know, what we're seeing in homes. Am I right to assume that on the right, where it's crossed the 20 parts per billion, we have?
You'll see color.
We'll see color, and that's where the reports correlate?
Right. So when, when, when you have colored water, it's actually solids, and it's not actually dissolved. It's solids, and they're very, very fine particles that don't settle, you know, if, if it's really fine. And so some of that is solids that will settle, and some of it is solids that won't settle. So what you want to do is just get that, get that part per billion level, the, the concentration level down to the point where it's not visible. Still be there, but it won't be visibly yellow.
My next question is for Director Leach. You've, your team's been flushing for some time. I seem to recall frequently in the past where your teams would be out there flushing and there'd be announcements. Are we not doing, were we not doing enough of it? Or are we recommending any, any change there in frequency? How's the flushing gonna, going to contribute to the situation if we've been doing it previously?
So I, we'd have to look to see when, prior to the starting of this, this week's flushing, I don't know off the top of my head when, because normally we do quarterly flushing, where we take a section of the town and flush that completely, so we're doing the, the entire town over the course of a year. But I don't know when the last time we flushed, I want to say it might have been July. So, and that's partly contributing to the lack of grapevine incidents in July. If you might recall, the newsletter came out, I think, the beginning of August, and we kind of say how it somewhat jinxed the lack of frequency of reports in grapevine because there were so, so few reports in grapevine through June and July, which last year we saw quite a bit more. But then it came in huge waves in August, in part by what Mr. Koba had said about some equipment failures and increased velocities in the system.
So Mr. Koba is our, and I know the committee's not at the end of their work. Will those be recommendations or collaboration with city to get to a cadence that you collectively feel will make a difference?
I, I think that there's a number of things that our consultant is still recommending for us to lower the amount of metals coming out of water treatment plants. So to, to add to what, what Joe said, that we really didn't start implementing the consultant protocol changes until like May of this year. So previous events of coloration could well have come from the water treatment plant. And, and you can see the spike, you saw the spikes in the source supply, and that makes it, when it, when you get, you're at 1,500 parts per million, it makes it more difficult to get it below 20. So we could well have had events earlier which were giving us color events, and what's important now is that we continue to monitor the, the outlet of the water treatment plants and to continue to make modifications to get that below our goal levels. And then, at that point, the, the color events that we have will be from distribution sediments and not from the wastewater treatment plant. And so we have two different approaches, two different things we have to work on, and I think it's really important that we work hard on the water treatment plants to make sure that we don't continue to put sediments into the pipelines and make it worse in the future.
Ms. Farida?
Thank you so much for, this is a wonderful report. Thank you very much for all the work you guys have put into this. Very much appreciated. And I know that the community also extremely appreciates this insight into what we're doing and what the problems are and how we're trying to fix them. My question, I guess, is more for clarification potential purposes. I understand that we're obviously now working on tracking as well, like, tracking the information as well as then trying to flush. My concern is like, what is the, our true capability of doing both at the same time? Are we, do we need to continue having this consultant to help us with that capability until we have all of the set computers, say, in place in order to do this? What is our current capability of being able to, now that we understand the issue, moving forward, what is our capability of doing the tracking, hence then flushing, to make sure, or try to make sure that this doesn't keep occurring?
Well, I can say something, and then Joe, you can correct me. I, I think our consultant is really helping us by changing the procedures that we're using at, at the, at the treatment plants. There, there are still things that he can help us do differently than we are doing today, and I believe we should continue with that process. That will have diminishing returns until we start changing, modifying the system, like putting the process control systems in place. I think then, again, he will be able to step in and help us utilize those to the best effect. And I think what we should see over time, if we are successful, is that these levels of metals coming out of, and, and I should say of color and odor as well, coming out of the wastewater treatment plants will continue to decline as we get more and more refined in our approaches. There comes a point in time when we're just going to be running again, and, but my suggestion would be that we continue to monitor these metal levels and biologic levels going off into the future as, as a way of understanding where our system is at all times.
And I, and I think I would add to that, that Dr. Najim brings expertise in this field that is, it's not just St. Helena-centric, but, I mean, he consults with water systems all over the country, quite honestly. And so the idea to, to Jay's point is that to help us not only develop a strategy to attack discoloration and the metals and odors, but also kind of track trends so that we continue to see the impacts of the strategies that we're implementing.
I, I think it's also really important that because our raw water changes so much over short periods of time, we may have to build in more responsiveness to, to peaks in, in raw water contaminants.
One last, one last question. Joe, this is, I think, again, for you, lucky you.
Thank you.
Yes, get ready. The initial slide where there was a lot of good stuff, looks from the consultant and the committee, and I'm sure staff, on systems that are not in the 1960s, more compute systems to monitor. Have those been, are those part of the SIP, existing SIPs? And if not, what's that, have we figured out what that impact will be? If so, are they going to be, are we going to reprioritize SIPs to cover off and front-load this type of activity, you know, from a water treatment standpoint, to alleviate concerns for residents sooner rather than later?
So I think the answer to both of your questions is yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Certainly.
We do have a specific SCADA project that, that we're in preparation of an RFP for, for that particular project.
Yeah, there's, there's some SCADA improvements that have taken place. Council authorized about $250,000 worth of improvements in June of last year, and we're about 85% through those. In the capital improvement plan that was adopted this year, there's another $500,000 or so as part of that program for which Jay was referring to will do an RFP. That's more of a system-wide, not specific to the wastewater treatment plant. There's a component to it at the, sorry, water treatment plant, but also throughout the distribution system as well. So yes, those are ongoing. There's also a, more of a longer-term capital project for wastewater treatment plant, condition assessment upgrades that come out of the condition assessment that we're just about completing, and will be, that's unfunded at this point, but it's kind of outside of the window of the current rate structure, which would go into the reprioritization of projects that Jay was referring to, that the Water Wastewater Advisory Committee has a subcommittee on that particular subject.
Thank you.
That's okay. I think we might have one more question, but I wanted to say the reason, first apologize, not only for mispronouncing your last name, but also I wondered why my introduction felt so clunky, and it was because I was supposed to have the city manager introduce this item. I'm sorry, it's my first day ever sitting here, but I did want to, we're going to come back to you, Billy, and I know that there's a few members of the public who wanted to comment, Mr. Summers. But Mr. Carmelo, did you, well, I'm going to say something first. I did want to say a big thank you. I think this is a really great example of everyone working together. We have the support of the city manager, we have a very collaborative director of public works. I will say, I've been involved in this committee, and that consultant is amazing and valuable, you know, keeping him as long as we need him. And then this water committee has, we have amazing expertise in this town. I probably also should have introduced Mr. Koba as having a, a very impressive background in chemistry, and I think, I don't even know what kind of industry, biology, something or other industry, but it's clear by the presentation. So thank you for all of that collaboration. I feel like this is an example of teamwork in our town. It's wonderful. Mr. Carmelo, thank you for supporting it, and sorry, I missed letting you introduce.
I, I feel like I've, I've come in late to the party, but no, thank you. I apologize if I want to switch the, switch the gears back to the committee. I just want to say that there was a meeting that you, you called where Director Leach, myself, ACM Leach, myself, along with Jay Koba was present, as well as other staff. I just got to say that I remember telling you afterwards that my, my brain was blown off, probably not well articulated the term, but what I meant was that I was surprised by the cogent way in which Mr. Koba expressed the challenges we face and outlined how much, the complexity of the work that needs to get done and the, and the order in which we should be thinking about it, rather than just, I think at one point he said, we should really think about, we can't really throw what we have and replace it. We really need to think about how do we use what we have more effectively as we plan for a better system and stabilized system. And that itself, understanding, and understanding the limitations of what, how much flexibility we have in fixing the system itself has been, has been daunting and a reality check. Even today, I just want to say, thank you, by the way, Vice Mayor, for all your hard work on this issue. Just today, you had three of us talk, and it took us a good half an hour to, to wrap our head around what was initially seemed like a simple issue, a five-minute issue. And I want to underscore for the community, it is frustrating for the council, for staff, and now, thanks, we are joined at the hip, the, the committee of, and by the way, Gary, thanks for all your hard work as well. As we struggle with this issue, and while I would love to say that we will fix this next week, it's not going to go, happen next week. It's going to take a while. In fact, if, Jay, if you want to come back and... In fact, if, Jay, if you want to come back and sort of describe, you were so much more effective in articulating the stuff that needs to get done and how long you think it might be. I just, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you can do that, and I know that, I didn't mean to take so much time. Councilmember Summers.
I think, I think Joe maybe will answer this better than I. I think there are some timeframes here. I think, I think we are in the middle of the consulting, consultant helping us with running the equipment that we have better. And there's going to actually be a pretty significant test of changing the flocculent system in a few months when the water demand goes down. That's going to be a big event. And so I am thinking that we're going to sort of run the course of what he can do with the existing configuration in the next four to six months. I think following that, the SCADA improvements will probably take about a year. If we're pretty aggressive about, and putting them at high priority to put those in place, we'll see another essentially incremental change in performance when we do that. I think my, my view at this point in time is there are going to be some larger equipment changes that we have to do. We don't know exactly what those are, but we will know better what they are within about six to nine months. And then there'll be another project that will probably take us into two years. But I think we should have a pretty stabilized system in six months to a year. Joe, would you agree with that? Of course, you're the guy that has to deliver.
So I would say yes, when we continue to use the owner's rep model to deliver projects. One of the agenda items tonight is executing a number of contracts with one of our consultants to perform those services. And so continuing to operate under that model, yes, I think we can deliver the projects in the timeframe Jay has outlined.
Yeah, fingers crossed and no promises, but we feel good. I am going to open it up to public comment, but Mr. Summers, did you have a question for Mr. Koba?
No, I'm okay, thanks.
Thank you so much, really to everyone. And I know there's Gary and Peter in the audience as well. It's a great committee and a great partnership. So I'll bring it back at the end, but I think that a few members of the public might have wanted to speak. Please do so. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, dear council, Vice Mayor. Adrian Signorolo, I live on Charles Avenue. And first of all, it's not my first language in English, so I'm so frail also to use my phone to a little bit help me getting the comment this evening. And thank you so much, Mr. Koba, so for this wonderful presentation that I think a lot of people in the community were waiting to have a little more clarity and expertise from your side. So I wanted to also, according to the treatment that we say that I'm sure usually the water for many residents to be safe to drink, after this beautiful presentation, it still remain unclear if the residents can still safely drink our water. And I'm not sure if you have been fully also approached by other residents and also for the wonderful application, mobile application, grapevine, is I think it's also a wonderful tool that older residents have, to express the matters that for many years, everyone see the bill, the water bill, keep going, increasing in revenue and expense for this household. And on top of that, now we are also confronting to get additional expenses to go to purchase some bottle of water, and even myself, maybe also like a house filtration system, which I'm not sure after this presentation, the house filtration system also give me a true transparency to drink water and also for my young child. So Mr. Mayor, and thank you also for getting back to me to the emails, but Mr. Mayor also expressed me and acknowledged me by email that the water quality and the rates are the most pressing issue that we have been facing for pretty more than a decade, if not two. And he was saying that there would be kind of like a short and long-term implementation. In that mind, for me, Madam Vice Mayor, my two questions are pretty, pretty simple. The first one is, what is the actual timeline from the city to implement both short-term and long-term solution according to Mr. Koba's expertise? That I think is pretty alarming when we see the rates of manganese and the health condition that could also decrease for everyone. To be, I think, a first subject to be truly considered. The second question will be also, would the city consider applying a kind of a discount or credit to the people, the residents in this municipality to have a kind of recognition in the financial burden that the residents have carried, I think, over the years? And I think it's also finally a matter that has to be kind of put, like you have said, with your expertise on the top of the pile, because if we don't act now, there's going to be even more problem down the line. And it will be even like scare away all the tourism that we have in coming to Santa Elena, coming in, you were seeing Mr. Summers in the other cities. This is kind of one of our source of revenue, and I think we need to put a great image to the tourism and which is our first income of revenue, I think, for the valley. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Mr. Rose, welcome, and thank you for your service on the committee as well.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm not speaking for the committee. I just would like to say that I think it's important to understand what the committee has done in the form of this subcommittee with Peter White and Jay, and in working with Joe Leach and Issam. It's a different approach than we've seen in the past, and I think it's very important. One, the changes that they're making are occurring much quicker than if you were to tear out what we have and replace them. And in addition to that, it's much more cost-effective. These changes are being done with the cost of a consultant, yes. I agree with Vice Mayor Deasy. He's very impressive. It's also very impressive to have Mr. Koba involved with this as well because of his chemistry background. And so we've been able, when I say we, the city has been able to benefit from a really planned approach to moving one step at a time in the most cost-effective, I guess, to use a term, gathering the low-hanging fruit first and getting the biggest bang for very little buck to get started in this process. And I think it's very impressive what they've been able to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Any others?
Good evening. I didn't prepare anything for this.
Welcome.
Thank you for the presentation. I want to echo with what he had to say as a resident here with not just the discoloration of the water, there's also a real funky smell. It's really actually kind of hard to smell it even just washing your dishes sometimes. But we are buying our own portable water. And cost of water has gone up. I know that is a significant issue for a lot of residents here. I think we're talking about trying to, you know, affect affordable housing here, but I think we also have to kind of address affordable utilities as well. One thing I know, I read in The Star, and I know, I think, I heard something about it with the, looking at the water neutrality reports and projects, instead of replacing plumbing fixtures of residences to kind of offset water. If you're evaluating water neutrality, I think, my understanding is that there are no more houses to replace their plumbing fixtures. So perhaps, you know, you know, this is off the top of my head, but is it possible to look at addressing, rather than replacing residential fixtures as an in-lufy, perhaps, more addressing costs of updating the city's infrastructure as an in-lufy and using those numbers that are more applicable potentially? Because the residential plumbing fixtures kind of calculations, they are a little, I don't know, maybe not current. So that's just something I think on top, I really am so glad that there is this committee of experts providing this information about the discoloration of the water and how to manage it, knowing that it won't go away. I hope that we can figure out something with this, I don't know, smell of the water, because it's either really funky or really chloriny. But the cost of the water on the residents here is a significant issue for anybody. So that's just what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Oh, can I allow it? Am I legally allowed to?
I don't know if my time was fully, I just wanted to final remind like.
One second.
Sure.
So typically, you only allow people to speak once. It's the prerogative of the mayor to let people.
It's my prerogative. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to just echo that everyone, I think, here have to also remind that we have been, you have been elected, I think, by the people. And I think also to hear the voice of the community is really important. And we know that you guys, everyone, like doing such a hard job, and your free time also to do that, and so we want to thank you. But essentially, I think there's more and more, I think, also like young generation, but the old generation also in the city, and I think a lot of people, I think, would love to have a little bit more quicker answer and more transparency on that matter. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, last call for public comment. I'm going to close public comments. We will, I think we're almost ready to move on, but let's briefly bring it back. I did want to, I'll say thank you for that public comment, and I heard that this needs to be, water needs to be a priority, and I am pretty confident that everyone on the council would agree with that and everyone on the staff. So absolutely. I did hear short-term and long-term. I think we had a great presentation on the short-term, and long-term is probably, you know, replacing all of the pipes in town. I think that has more to do with leaks and actually potentially a little less to do with the quality of water. I'm not an expert, but that's my understanding. And then there was the topic of cost, the topic of water sustainability. Those are, those are big issues in themselves, and the Water Committee in partnership with Public Works is tackling those. I think it makes the most sense to come back and really do justice to those topics. So I don't want to dismiss it. I just think it would be better served in another conversation. So please stay tuned. I also know the Water Committee is talking about communications, and we recognize how important that is as well. And we also don't want to not just communicate, but do the best we can to fix it. Not an easy topic. Mr. Summers.
I'd just like to say a few things about water, because I care deeply about it. You know, one, I think we need to open up access to Bell Canyon for recreation for ourselves, because we own it, it's ours, and it's just the most beautiful lake you've ever seen in all of Napa Valley. And it's locked off from us. That's one. Two, I think water in my pie-in-the-sky world would be free. Two, as we go forward, I don't want to just implement things that are not expensive. It's already so expensive. Let's make the best water system in all of California and be the jewel example of regenerating our own water, okay? Because now we're allowed to by the state ecologically, we can, you know, what do you call it? Reclaim, recycle, yeah, recycle, reduce, we can regenerate and claim like 30%, get off paying Napa, okay? And maybe get off of Stone Bridge. And then I want to know the maintenance costs as we go forward. Okay, we got a new flushing system, a new schedule. Well, how much is this costing us? Every time we get something new and put it in, what does it cost to maintain this thing? I also want to know what materials are available and what our options are. I don't want to just like put this pipe in. I want to know the longevity, the health results of that, you know? Is it off-gassing VOCs into my, you know what I mean? I want to be thoughtful and clear as possible. And I'm glad that we have this committee and Gary and these people. We're finally getting to where we can fix the water. And yes, I also want to reiterate, it's, you guys kept saying discoloration. I will take dirty colored water if it doesn't smell like the funky swamp monster of death any day. So, you know, it's really the smell and, you know, taking that shower and cleaning the clothes and the dishes, it's just, it's way too much for how much it costs. And I want to reduce costs of water. I'm also anti-smart meter, just for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. I think I'm, we're about ready to move on to the next, oh, go ahead.
So I just had one, one quick thing. I would like, if we could, to see, Mr. Leach, if we could see, I don't know how often this needs to go out, but something alerting the public as to when or in how safe the water is on, I don't know what kind of basis that is, but is it safe to bathe in? Is it safe to drink? You know, is it safe to, you know, be, yeah, showering, bathing? Kind of safety precautions for the people in town. I think for peace of mind especially, I think it would be really beneficial for them to know when they can be utilizing the water that they have in their homes. And then also whether or not they should be, on their own individual bases, doing a testing with, you know, with their healthcare providers, you know, if that's a necessity or not as well. And I'd love your thoughts.
Well, I can't speak to that last item relatively quickly, is as we're receiving grapevine issues and those are posted, then we're going door-to-door to those customers and taking samples from their faucets inside the house, outside of the house, and then hose bibs up and downstream, and getting those results just from their property and sending those to them. Usually it's about a 10-day turnaround, but what we're testing for is the iron and manganese and providing those results to the customer. So if they are elevated at their home, then they can provide that to their healthcare provider and have a consultation with them. Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Okay, I think we'll close it, but a lot of those strategic conversations are happening, so we can talk or you can join the thing. Thank you. Let's move on. Thank you, everyone, for a great, a great discussion and conversation, staff and committee and council members and public. Thank you very much. The next item, we'll move to staff briefings and presentations, 9.1. Mr. Camello, would you like to introduce the item?
Just quickly, I'll just turn it over to Assistant City Manager Leach.
Thank you for that introduction. This, this item before you this evening, Vice Mayor and council members, I need to apologize because we had been tasked by the council about a year ago to bring quarterly updates to you on the status of the capital improvement plan. And we had been remiss, I had been remiss in working with staff to bring that before you. So fiscal year '26 is a new leaf. We're bringing quarterly updates to you, so it'll be October. Here we are in October, we'll have one in January. And so after the end of each quarter, we'll bring an update and provide that to you. So next slide, please. And really what I want to talk to is, you know, we have the civic and streets components of the capital improvement plan, as well as the voluminous, water and wastewater voluminous, not only in number, but in overall expenditure as well. So we'll touch base on a few of those. And this year, we wanted to do something a little different. I think what came out of some conversations with the capital prioritization subcommittee that's part of the Water Wastewater Advisory Committee, the idea of presenting material to council and the public that's not diving into the weeds of all of specific projects, but really staying high-level and helping both the council and the public understand some of the trends. And then if specific projects come up that you have heard of, that you're curious on, then we can. then we can dive into that specific project. But just wanted to kind of highlight some of the, some of the, everything to the left of the solid line that ends with '25, '26, that's what you might have recalled from our capital improvement program or plan that had been adopted in May of this year. So what we spent to date is reflected in the column to the far right. And so you can see what's evidenced by some of the streets projects that are being embarked on currently. You will see some movement on the stormwater as we award the Oak Avenue Utilities Project. I think that's happening the, either the next meeting in the end of this month or the first meeting in November. And, let's see, we'll continue to move on. Next slide, please. Here's some of the things that staff has done as far as operations. You can see the total length of crack ceiling that we've done throughout various streets, and that equates to miles and also in materials used. Why we, why we keep this as a capital project? We actually have to track both time and materials from staff performing street maintenance operations. That's part of our maintenance of effort obligation. That's part of the Measure U, which is the sales tax measure for roadway maintenance in Napa County. We have an obligation to demonstrate a certain amount per year as part of that agreement. Next slide, please. And so then we get into some of the other items for water wastewater. The more significant elements of what's been expended to date on wastewater is really related to the wastewater treatment plant, some of the expenditures, as well as the Cronella Pump Station. That project will be coming for you for acceptance, I believe, on the 28th. So that project's just about done. The wastewater treatment plant continues to work through, no pun intended, but some of the bugs in the system. And so we're still working towards completion of that project. Some of the items spent to date on the water systems include some of the skate upgrades and some, I think that's primarily what we've expended money on that. Next slide, please. We did want to kind of highlight Mr. Kuba and Mr. Rose. They were, kind of, they're members of the Subcommittee that I had mentioned. So they were the ones that kind of helped inspire some of these changes to the presentation. So I appreciate their thoughtful input and collaboration. So we'll kind of talk through some of the things that they've brought to bear that I think is really going to springboard towards how projects are prioritized in the future, which will also lead to how projects are prioritized as we embark on an updated rate study at some point in time. Next slide, please. And so what, what they had kind of put together is, you know, let's start with, what's the disposition of various projects? I think oftentimes it may have, we, I may have not have communicated clearly that a project, depending on the nature of a project, has a start and an end. And if it's a construction project, there's a lot of steps in between the starting and the end. And so the idea was, let's kind of document what are those steps? If it's a study, then that's a little more straightforward. If there's something, if it's a different type of project, then there's, it kind of deviates from the standard template, for lack of a better term. But really, we wanted to help kind of memorialize, what are the stages of a typical construction project? And as we've highlighted here, there's about 17 that haven't been started. There's six that are in what's called the Design Professional Services Agreement Development Stage. And that's where we go out for a request for proposals and seek a professional consultant to help with the design and development of ultimately bid documents. And then once that's awarded to a consultant, and we go through preliminary design, and that equates to about a 30% level design, then we progress to final design. PSNE is the Plan, Specification and Estimates, and that's the final stage before bid documents. Then we come before council and seek authorization to go out to bid, go through procurement, build the project, then we go towards commissioning. And then, once the project's accepted, then we have a year of stable operations and warranty period. Then we, after close to about the 11-month mark, then we go through a punch list and review the project and make sure it's still operating as it was originally designed and constructed. So we just kind of wanted to highlight, there's 47 projects, and they're all at various stages in, along this particular process train. And so it's, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that the team had put together in kind of helping communicate the life of our project from inception to completion. Any particular questions on this slide? Sir?
Where would the requirements gathering phase of this project go? Usually that's in the beginning. Is it bundled within one of those?
Yeah, so I would say that's kind of, it probably falls into the not-started phase. So what I'm hearing from you is like, how do we determine what is a project?
More than that, how, how do you determine what the design is going to be, right? If you just go into design without understanding what you're trying to accomplish?
Yeah, so studies will kind of develop the higher-level parameters of what the need is. For example, in utilities, the Integrated Utility Master Plan. The end result of that study for sewer water and storm drain has a variety of pipeline improvements based upon capacity insufficiencies in the system. And so it laid out a 20-year capital program. And so then we'll use that and funding availability as a constraint to kind of develop scoping. And then it goes out to, as we kind of hire a consultant, they'll do the preliminary design. And through that preliminary design, that begins to hone in what the scope of the project is.
Got it. Is, this looks really good. It's sort of a rudimentary sort of enterprise project management framework or control framework. Have you guys been internally talking about having, bundling these into gates? Meaning gates where there's folks at the city that are appointed to then get the output and then thumbs up, thumbs down before it moves officially into the next stage? Or is this is just a preliminary early on?
I don't know that we've, I don't know that we've progressed to that point yet.
Okay. I mean, it's great just to see this stuff-
Agreed.
-on paper.
I'll leave that to the discretion of the Vice Mayor.
Is that legal?
Shall we wait till a public comment or have a committee member?
We'll have a public comment. We'll wait till public comment. Thank you.
Certainly. Okay, moving on. Next slide, please. The other thing that the Subcommittee wanted to kind of look at is kind of what we're calling strategic drivers, is it's really the why behind the various projects. And so they kind of came up with a few items that, to help illustrate the drivers. Between compliance, and that's legal or regulatory or risk management compliance, maintain the infrastructure that's kind of related to operations and maintenance, clearly water quality is a driver, supply flexibility, so, you know, increasing, studying increasing capacity and opportunities for supply, resilience, making sure the systems are able to be operated in perpetuity, and then enhance the capabilities of either the data or analysis of the systems. And so again, this kind of helps craft the criteria of what's going to rise to the top as the priorities associated with what projects are delivered before others. Currently, the CIP really has what we've deemed a rudimentary prioritization system. You'll see in the CIP worksheets either high, medium, or low. And that's really dependent upon regulatory, health, safety, a variety of funding urgency. But it doesn't really compare projects to each other in terms of a ranking system. And I think this type of strategic driver and matrix will help both the Subcommittee, staff, and ultimately the council and public help prioritize those. Next slide, please. And I'm here to field any questions you might have.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we take any clarifying questions, then open it up for public comment, and then we'll come back for a larger discussion, more deeper questions? I'm going to open it up for public comment. Welcome back, Mr. Koba.
Thanks. I wanted to respond to your question. I think there are some natural decision points within those 11 different steps where there are actually decisions. We don't have a formal stage gate process. But there are places in there, for example, the council will approve an RFP going out, or the council will approve a bid. So I think if you actually went through this list, there's probably different, four different places in that list where, where council actually does make a decision as to whether it passes a gate.
Thank you very much. And yes, again, Mr. Koba and Mr. Rose and the committee, thank you for, I'm contributing, there were a lot of great discussions, and so I'm excited that this committee will be back. Do we have? Oh.
If I can say one more thing. This is not just applicable to capital projects. This is anything that you, has a beginning and an end. And if you actually look at a number of the things that the city does, many of them are projects with a beginning, a middle, and an end. And they could be put into the same kind of framework and with the same kinds of prioritizations that are set not just by, say, water and wastewater strategic intent, but other intents of the city.
Mr. Rose.
So this started with Water and Wastewater Committee. And then because it was CIP-driven, and I'm on the Finance Committee as well, I went ahead and took the, the remaining CIP projects that are not listed as water and wastewater, so civic, streets, storm drains specifically, and put them into the same type of matrix. And then, they're a little bit different, because they don't have the same, what we're referred to as strategic drivers. There's not a lot of, of compliance-type projects necessarily. You may have one or two. There's some safety issues, that type of thing, that they could certainly be classified as that. The idea behind this was not necessarily for the Water and Wastewater Committee or the Finance Committee to set those. It was a rough draft of, and we handed it off to, to Mr. Leach and said, you know, mark this up. We, we did the best we could. We took it off of the sheet-by-sheet analysis and tried to stay with that format. And then we massaged that, changed some of the things. I have since, and I don't know if Joe has seen it or not, I've since added dollars associated with that mainly for the Finance Committee to look at and trying to get, start to put the street stuff in order and spread them out over the years and so forth, so that we can see, especially under the general fund-type things, the source funding is really important. With the water and wastewater, most of it is coming out of bonding, but you do need to be able to see where that is and when it's going to be spent. So it is being transferred over, thanks to the Water and Wastewater Committee, to try and get the same type of format into the other CIP projects. And as Jay said, it doesn't just apply to CIP. That's where we started. But anything that can be defined as a project, or as Jay said, has a start and an end, works well with this. You can prioritize it by something other than low, medium, high. What we found is that we had, out of the 47 projects, I think there were 36 of them that were ranked as high priority. And it's really hard to then sort through that and figure out, you know, how high is high. So that's, that's where it's headed. And to answer your question, Aaron, it's, this is very early in the process, and it's, it's changing as we go.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rose. And let's, oh, Mr. Summers.
I just want to commend this committee, Gary Rose, Mr. Kuba, and say that I don't want to forget that it was really hard to get this committee put together, and it almost didn't happen. And there was forces kind of going against it. Gary got unenthused, disenchanted at one point, but thank goodness, I know, bro. But, you know, we get overwhelmed, but we will not be overcome, right? Because we come together. And I just want to say and remind you that I remember all of that and everything that we went through to get here, the rougher the battle, the sweeter the victory. And this is a prime example of the intelligence and the capabilities of our community coming together and doing something really meaningful in a place that's highly valuable, our water source. And I just love what you guys have done. And this is the type of committee that's an example for every other committee that we do, because they don't always go this good. And so I just want to say thank you and, and let you know that I, hats off, you know, it's a privilege and an honor, and I'm just thankful.
Here, here.
I think the committee is hitting on a really important fundamental function in modern government and in business, which is the concept of program management, program management, project management, business analysis, and the frameworks that go with it. And the fact that they put this together in a short time on a volunteer basis is really something, and we should value that. And I think from a city perspective, we should be looking, and I know we are with the modernization effort, I don't want to get ahead of the cart here, but fundamentally pulling this in as DNA to run all facets. And it might not look, and I don't think the committee is expecting it to look the same as it does now, as opposed to a year from now or even two years from now, but adopting a PMI-based framework, I think will do a world of good. And I would expect that to come out with the results. But for now, this is a great, a really big step. Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you, Mr. Leach.
Thank you.
All right, let's keep, we'll go ahead and move on to, oh, do we need a? Okay, let's do five minutes? Five minutes? Okay. If it's okay with everyone, let's take a five-minute break, please. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so very much for covering them. Very, very much appreciated. I know this town is-
We're not done.
I know. But I have a ton of, always, I'm super excited that this work has been, and that we're still at sea and working on it. Very much appreciated. Thank you both very much.
Where the water goes in, the water comes out.
Very elaborate.
Where the water goes in, the water comes out.
Very elaborate.
Okay, we'd like to call the meeting back to order or reconvene, please?
Yes.
Great. Okay, moving on to our consent calendar. Do I have to give it here? Mr. Camello.
We're not going to pull anything, council members, so it's, I mean, Vice Mayor DZ. So you can, I guess, ask the council if they have any items to pull. If not, we seek approval.
Okay. And do we open for public comment? If there's any, I think, let me just read it. Thank you. Sorry. If I can find it. Consent, we're on consent items. So members of the council or the public who are present at the meeting may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or public comment, unless that is done. One motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. Nothing pulled here.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent.
I will second that motion.
Roll call, please. Do we want to open it up to the public to make sure they don't have?
Sure. I think, I saw the vice mayor kind of look out, but just affirming nobody wants to pull anything.
I did look out, I'm sorry. If there's any public comment, please come to the podium. Okay. All right, I'm going to close public comment. And roll call. Okay. Councilmember Barrick.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Spataroto.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor DZ.
Yes.
It's me again. Next item is, we'll move on into new business. So 13.1 is approval of a resolution authorizing recruitment for an Assistant Public Works Director, Chief of Police and Community Services Director. Mr. Camello, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor DZ. This, I'll let Director Kellogg provide some more details. But the reason we're bringing this forward is because we want to make sure that we are prepared to seek replacements or recruitment for these positions listed. With that, Director Kellogg.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. So this item is related to requesting authorization to recruit for three positions. On March 11th, the City Council adopted a temporary freeze on all new hires except for positions recommended for immediate hiring in a staff report that we took at that time. All other vacant positions will remain frozen unless council approves them on an exception basis. So back in, a couple of months ago, our deputy, or not our deputy, I'm sorry, our Director of Community Services did leave the city, leaving that position vacant. We also recently received news that our Chief of Police is going to be retiring soon. And then our Deputy City Manager, Leslie Milton, also left the city last month. And so those are the three positions that we're requesting to replace or recruit for. Right now, we do have someone who's standing in as the acting for the deputy, or sorry, the Director of Community Services. And so we're going to give that person an opportunity to fill that position. But if that doesn't work out, then we're going to request to recruit for that as well, too. And I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kellogg. Are there any brief clarifying questions?
So, Director Kellogg.
Yes.
Thank you for that overview. I noticed the wording isn't directly approval to go hire, that you're looking for internal candidates in each.
That's correct. Yes.
I'd like to propose that we also work with the modernization expert, because, I mean, in some, like the Chief of Police, I think that's a no-brainer. Community Services Department and others, it might look different potentially. And I know that study's ending in March. What are your thoughts there?
I would defer that over to the City Manager.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, council member. So we are looking at those options. As was alluded by Director Kellogg, we have internal candidates who have been serving in that capacity. Particularly, I'm referring to the Director of Community Services position. And so my intent is to let that process play itself out, look at the strengths of our organization. We are in consultation with the Black Book firm. If ideas emerge as to a different structure or different ways in which we can manage the workforce, then we'll explore that. We'll certainly keep the council informed. We can have those discussions if necessary, because you'll have far-reaching internal implications. So we'll probably need to bring those issues in closed session if it's so, if it's necessary. On the issue of the Assistant Public Works Director, we will probably come and ask for, as you can see, the title is a little different from the previous incumbent. This is for operational purposes. Our intent at this point, when you combine, when you think about 13.1 and 13.2, our real intent was to make sure that we have a contract in place with the recruitment firms that way. When we, if and when we need to recruit, we can do so expeditiously. So to your concern or to your point about looking at the internal structure and management, we are doing that. And we will come get back to you once we conclude that process.
Okay, so we understand we wouldn't be approving the actual positions to go out to hire today. We would be approving, what would we be approving exactly? The...
So in 13.1, you would be approving the recruitment of those three positions. But what I'm saying is that based on the recommendations that may come out of the efficiency study, we may bring those issues into closed session. But because we want to also get a contract in place sooner than later, we wanted to make sure that, we want both those items approved today.
Let's do this. Any other, I think, did that answer your clarifying question?
It did.
Okay. Let's, thank you, Ms. Kellogg. No, I think we don't, any other questions from Ms. Kellogg? Let's open it up for public comment and then bring it back for discussion. Public comment, Mr. Rose.
Yes, I didn't know whether or not I wanted to talk about this or not, but now that Council Member Barrick brought it up, I had asked Mandy Kellogg earlier this week, don't we already have an Assistant Public Works Director? And I was afraid that we were looking for a new Assistant Public Works Director, and I thought maybe Eric had left without me knowing it. So it seems a little confusing to me that we now are looking at having two Assistant Public Works Directors. And then I can't keep track of where Joe's at. He's also Assistant City Manager, and I assume still Director of Public Works. So I've got the latest organizational chart, and it's kind of interesting, because Leslie Milton had six people reporting to her, and then there were six people on her level that have no one reporting to them as far as the org chart goes. So it just seems to me that I would put it on hold as well until this Transformation Committee comes into being. I don't know, I can't make any decisions in terms of the Community Services Director, but I know we got along pretty well prior by just having someone running the library and someone running parks and recreation. So I would, it's not my place to say this, but it does give, the City Council has already inserted themselves into this hiring thing, because typically I would say it's up to the city manager to do this. But now you guys are kind of incumbent now to sort this out. I think it should be postponed until we can figure out if this really makes sense. And again, the org chart is what I'm going by, and I understand operationally, it's probably moved around a lot since this organizational chart has been published. So that's my only comment, is I just, I didn't know how we were going to deal with two Assistant Directors of Public Works. And I'd really like to see Eric, I guess, serve a bigger role. And from a personal standpoint, I would like to see Joe have, as opposed to hiring this high on the organizational chart, I'd like to see us put some project managers into the Public Works Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Is there any other public comment? With none, I will close public comments and bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Camello.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DZ. A couple of things. I hear Councilmember Barrick's concerns. So maybe the way to deal with this is to move forward on the two of the positions, which is the Chief of Police and the Assistant Public Works Director, and hold off on the Community Services Director. Typically, we have the closed session preceding the meeting, and so I get a chance to brief you there. And fortunately, today, we had moved it tomorrow for scheduling purposes. So let me talk real briefly about the Assistant Public Works Director. And I invite Assistant City Manager Leach to opine as well. The public work structure is that we have essentially, a couple of years ago, created two positions, two Assistant Director positions. One was for land development and other operational, other projects, and then essentially project management. And the Chief of the Operations Team was also an Assistant Public Works Director. That's the position that is currently vacant. And that was previously held, or at least recently held, by Leslie Milton. She had been given the Deputy City Manager position, because she's really not a public works professional, and had been assigned there by me to handle that operation as well as to perform other work. So that's the lay of the land. As far as the timing is concerned, that position, a little bit more than the Chief of Police, is urgent. The position has been vacant for a while. It's very important that we at least have the authority to recruit when we're ready, because it's a very important, with large, I think the largest number of direct reports in the city. So it's a critical position for us. Director Leach, you want to opine?
Yeah, I think it just, the key is the vacancy of a critical component to our mid-management structure. We have staff that are functioning in interim role, but that's, that works where you're still, we're still down a full-time equivalent. And we're seeing the impact on both operations and collaboration with regulatory agencies. It just becomes a greater challenge.
I also want to add, if you wouldn't mind, Vice Mayor DZ, that the point that Mr. Rose made about project management is apropos. In fact, Director Leach and I, ACN, Leach and I have been talking about that, and we believe we will, we won't be specific tomorrow in closed session, but we will provide you with a clue on insight as to our thinking. So it's a very important issue and quite a nice insight that Mr. Rose pointed out. It's a critical issue today. Project management has to be a top priority.
Thank you. I'm going to open it back up for council discussion.
I'd like to suggest that the Chief of Police goes forward, and that we hold Public Works and the Community Services. However, because of the criticality, I think this is a perfect opportunity to use staff up for a consultant, right, if things are that critical. From what I recall Leslie was doing was, was more of a program manager role, and she was driving things. And we're all, I think we're all sensitive to that. But, you know, while, once you hire, right, then there's a process and there's a timeline there to get somebody in. Even if you start it tomorrow, right, you're looking at two, three months by the time they start. So we should just, if it's that critical, at least where I work, I'm hiring a hired gun with the staff savings to pay for it, and you get somebody who can come in and help in that area. And that buys us time to figure out, hey, what does right look like? We've been talking a lot about project management office and those things. And I think everybody's aligned there, including our city manager and the senior management. It might be that this position is in Public Works, but more
then we can bring these items perhaps as early as next meeting. That might be another way to handle it, because I'm not concerned about the Chief of Police position, because there's going to be an interim there anyway.
Yeah, I think it sounds like there's consensus. I want to say congratulate -- he's not here. Congratulations to Chief Hartley on his retirement, I'm sure, from everyone. And I think we can all agree that there needs to be a Chief of Police.
And since we're talking about -- since we mentioned Ms. Milton, I just want to say that, you know, she played -- and it's really sad, actually, looking back, that we weren't able to send -- do -- give her a really nice send-off, because we were hoping to keep her in some capacity, it just didn't work out. But I want to say that she not only managed people, managed programs, but she did quite a heavy lift in that she was our liaison and our face to the regulatory agencies. And the confidence that they have in us, despite all the challenges we've had in our water and wastewater systems, is due in great part to her contributions, her building of relationships, and her diligence in following up. Also, she brought a scientific mind to water treatment and our discoloration issue, and collaborated, of course, well with the committee, so that we are -- we began to, for the first time in many, many years, actually begin to track the actions we take, the impact it has, and then -- so we can modulate what we do in the future. It's just been a big loss.
I agree.
Well, if you're listening in France, Leslie, thank you.
Italy.
Italy, wherever. Europe. Okay, do we need a vote here, or just direction of --
Are you okay with it?
Yeah.
You don't need a vote to --
No, if you've tabled it, you'll need a vote.
For the Chief of Police?
You didn't table it at all.
Oh, you want to table it all? Sure. Okay, wonderful. Okay, thank you for that great discussion. Let's move on to -- we can skip 13 -- we're going to -- we can just pull 13.2 right there. That's all good. And --
I would --
Make it official?
I'll just ask if there's public comment on it. Is it on the agenda?
Is there any public comment on 13.3? With none, we will move to City Council reports.
I have one.
Great. Mr. Barrick.
I want to give a quick update on the Finance Committee. We're not as far along as the Water Committee. And when we are, it will be my pleasure to have the Finance Committee come here and give a presentation with their data. But what we are doing right now, we have had a chair switch-over, and Arlene Corsetti is the new chair, as of a few months ago. And she is with Chris Warner as the vice chair, has been organizing the committee with subcommittees and knocking out the original council's ask. We have four items there folks can refer back to, but the main driver is to get now agreement on definitions in much the same way Gary is getting definitions about, you know, projects. We're trying to get definitions on terms like obligated deficit, aspirational responsible level of service, and then put actual testable criteria. And this is all going to be based on JFOA best practices. So, we're not going to be making history. And then, as the committee continues to look at CalPERS and relook at other areas of our financial health, the staff and the committee will be able to come together and, using those criteria, agree that X goes here, Y doesn't go there. And they'll be able to -- our hope is to report out jointly on what our financial situation is, so then we all can make decisions rather than dueling numbers and dueling thoughts. So, that's where we're at today, and we're making good progress. We should have the definitions complete by the next Finance Committee meeting, and we should have our unfunded liabilities knocked out as the first hard dollar amount for a liability, and more to come.
Thank you. I am looking forward to hearing the results or thoughts or wherever you all are. So, thank you for all of that. I know that committee's been working hard. Anyone else? Well then, I didn't prepare like a nice closing statement. Shoot.
Something witty.
Yeah. Thank you.
Give us your heart. Open up. Be vulnerable.
It's been a lot of fun. Thank you for this opportunity to be here. Enjoyed seeing and having this conversation with everyone. So, have a great night. See you in two weeks or whenever our next meeting is. Come back public. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Deasy.